Could I have everyone's attention, please? It's 7:02, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Everybody has the agenda, we're on item two, which is gallery presentations, and our first presentation is the straight area transit for funding request. That would be Jim and Jesse?
Jesse, Malcolm.
Malcolm, so you can hit, you can hit both mics and we'll hit them both on.
You can have the flicker, oops, I didn't want to go that fast. Case it on the screens there as well. Thanks, Mr. Warden and council, appreciate the opportunity, just to kinda lay it out there. We made a number of presentations sort of since a year ago, April, just looking at the funding piece for Richmond County. A year ago in August, we, we cut the services because the funding request wasn't met. We know council was going through a lot of changes at that time. So we've bided our time as a transit to get to this point. The pilot completed in the fall of 2016, and there's enough in this slideshow to give you the evidence that this works. What we're asking for now is the courage to make the investment for the citizens who have the least voice. And if we look at what transit in rural communities means to people, I think we can see the importance of what we're doing here. With the management team and the staff, we're running transit, we're running a professional organization, this isn't someone running a bus in their spare time. So I think we need to seriously look at this, I think we've been patient at transit, but the importance of rural transit, anybody who was at the UNSM, anybody who was just at the UNSM, where they spoke about the importance of rural transit to Nova Scotia, being recognized more by the province means that we have the potential to get more and more investment. If we give up on transit, there is no more investment. Likewise, at the FCM, where the Prime Minister Trudeau spoke to us about the importance of transit across this country, he would have included us in rural transit even though when you're talking about the big urban transits, we know the demands are there. So I'm just gonna let Jesse run through this one more time, and I'd really appreciate if we could get the decision making time. There's many different ways, as a municipal councillor, I know we can fund these things. We just set our rate today, we just set our rate today, unfortunately, we didn't have to increase it. We're a dollar two for residential, we didn't have to increase it this year. Thankfully, we've got enough development going on that we can fund some of these initiatives the way we are right now. But we really need to seriously look at this as a basic service to our citizens, and extending it to Lordways, to Port L'Tech, to St. George's Channel is where we can regain the sort of transit that we used to have in Richmond County. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jesse, hopefully lots of opportunity to get the questions through, and she'll walk us through.
Okay, so we're gonna go through a brief history of the transit, we'll talk about the two-year pilot project that went on, and then we'll look at the future of transit. So we were established in 2007, we're in our 10th year. From 2007 to 2014, we provided service in Inverness, Richmond, and Port Oxberry. Service needed to be suspended for six months in April of 2014 until October of that year, where the agreement was made between Richmond and Inverness councils that we would do a two-year pilot project to see if transit is necessary and feasible in our municipalities. Dwayne McDonald took over as manager at that time. In August of 2015, we expanded service to Victoria County for an eight-month pilot project. April 2016, Dwayne McDonald stepped down as manager, myself and Malcolm McPhail took over operations. June 2016, changed Wyckogama from route to dial-a-ride, we can explain more detail what the difference is between those two a little later. August in 2016, we had to reduce service in Richmond County to meet the funding that was provided. In the past, it seemed regardless of how much money was put in, if people called, they got booked in, even if costs weren't being covered. That had to stop, in August, we were able to cut back service. October 2016, even with this cutback, we saw the largest number of passengers moved in a month in transit's history, 2,370, fairly significant number, I would say. So, these are our revenues and expenses for the first year of the pilot project. Inverness, the biggest contributor by far, $150,000 a year they were contributing, the province fares, Richmond was there with $48,000. And expenses, always payroll is gonna be our largest expense, we invest in our employees, they're good employees, and like, that's obviously where our money's gonna go. $87,000 of this first year went to just maintenance costs, which is huge, it's too much, we spent more trying to fix the vehicles than we did in fuel actually having the vehicles run on the road. Let's see, so in 2016, we had the shift in management. Our operational goals at the time were to increase ridership in both municipalities as their funding would permit, increase the charter service during the summer months, and develop strong relationships with suppliers and customers, which is huge, this is a fairly small area, we're limited with suppliers, you need to have good relationships to have good business, develop consistency with our routes as well as dial-a-rides to ensure customer satisfaction. We want every single person that gets on the bus to be able to get where they need to go on time for a reasonable price. So 2016, the big changes, municipally, we received less money, Victoria was no longer a partner with us, so receiving $60,000 less in revenue that year, but we were also able to decrease our expenses by $70,000 that year. Maintenance, you can see, dropped from 19% to 11% of our total expense, that's a difference of $87,000 to $42,000. This was accomplished by having Malcolm do the majority of the maintenance, oil changes, tire rotations, brakes, anything like that. So huge cost savings, admin expenses decreased by $10,000. We turned a couple jobs into one, dispatch accounting manager, I take over that now, Malcolm maintenance operations, so we're cutting costs. Again, fuel remained about the same, and yeah. So here we go, this is the breakdown of costs for transit. Anybody who's gonna use the transit, it's $5 to travel within the municipalities of Inverness, or Richmond, or the town of Port Oxberry. Monthly passes, $100. Travel outside of these areas is charged at a rate of 55 cents a kilometer, this is all regulated by the UARB. Charter rates regulated as well, 24-passenger bus, $500, and so on and so on. Again, all these are regulated, we have to charge these prices. So here's a review of passengers who traveled in Richmond County over the two years of the pilot project. Richmond, right from the get-go, has always been a strong supporter of transit, it's made fairly clear when we look at this, between 600 and 700 a month, I'd say it would be an average. You can see in August 2016, when we reduced service, numbers dropped significantly, and we are floating around, you know, about 300 people a month we move now since the cutback in service, which is a shame, because we know how many more people want to and have used it in the past. Charters, again, this was one of our goals when we took over, there's money to be made in the summertime especially, school's out, so traffic's a little bit less, so booking charters really, really helps with revenue, offsets costs that we don't actually get in the summertime, 'cause students aren't traveling. So here's our overview, first year of the pilot project, we had fares of $55,000, charter revenue of 16, courier revenue $2,200. Year two, again, when management shifted, we took over, huge increases, $25,000 increase in fares, $15,000, a little better than that, in charters and courier again. So here are our numbers, year one of our pilot project, 7,009 people in Richmond County were transported using dial-a-ride, 3,600 in Inverness, the route in Inverness, which is the set route that goes from Port Oxberry to Inverness four times a day, moved 2,300 people, and the charters. So we moved 13,000 for a total of $73,000 in fares. In one year, we were able to increase this to 18,000 total, and fare income increased to 118.
Just, just speak to the numbers we had before the pilot, so the pre-pilot numbers were around 6,000 passengers.
Total.
Total. So we went from 6,000 to 13,000 to 18,000. And I think you need to understand that transit was not in good shape when, when we took it over in 2014 to really put it back on the road, it was just about finished. The quality, what was left of the equipment, who the staff were, and what the routes were. So it didn't, we didn't start from scratch, but just to sort of give you an idea, the year before this pilot, the numbers were.
And again, the decrease in Richmond's passenger count in year two was due to the decrease in service, the number of hours we were actually able to provide. Yeah, but we know that number can, can rise. Why do people use transit? We transport people for educational purposes, take them to NSCC, we have contracts with the Straight Regional School Board, a lot of upgrading courses happen in St. Peters, and yeah, we're able to transport everybody there. Employment, medical appointments, visit family, friends, entertainment, charters. This past year, we started chartering the Straight Pirates, the local hockey team, it's great, great for transit, great for them, cost savings is huge. Seniors events in all the municipalities, church functions, and weddings, of course. Every weekend this summer is booked with weddings and charters, so it's great. Currently, Inverness is providing $140,000 a year to straight area transit, they're receiving 50 hours of route service and 30 hours of dial-a-ride service a week. So the difference is, the set route runs five days a week, Monday to Friday, no matter what, it has its specific stops in Troy, Judic, Mabu, Port Hood, the whole way up. The dial-a-ride means it's available to anybody, anywhere in Inverness County, so we'll travel to their door to pick them up and take them where they need to go. Richmond County currently provides $45,000 of funding, and they receive 20 hours of dial-a-ride service per week. So it's a bit trickier in Richmond, because the hours are so limited. We still do dial-a-ride, we pick up everybody at their door and drop them off where they need to go, it's just we're limited with anything else. Right now, it works, we try to gather everybody in the mornings to get them into Port Oxberry for work, or for courses, anybody who's still in school, and get them home at the end of the day. Port Oxberry is currently working on developing a place for maintenance to be done, to keep our repair costs low, and also looking at office space free of charge. Okay, so here's the current area that we're able to cover in Richmond County, and again, it's only kind of one runaround in the morning, and then one back in the afternoon. So we gather, this is the, this is the way we could gather the most people, so basically to make the most of the money that we were receiving for funding. So this is where we're able to travel, starting down in Paddy de Gra, working our way up around the island, and then into Port Oxberry. So the future of STAT, with strong contributions, we know we can continue to grow. Vehicle replacement will be achieved through monies provided annually by the municipalities and the provincial government. What I ask of you tonight for funding, it won't be more for buses, everything is worked into this one cost, and that will remain unchanged, hopefully for several years. We wanna reach out to organizations and strengthen our contract customers to continue to grow our business. Again, it's been tricky in Richmond County, because we don't have the extra hours, we're not able to reach out and to support everybody that we feel needs, needs the support here. And advertising, of course, we wanna look at efficient, cost-effective ways to let even more people know about the services. So from Inverness, we've requested $140,000 per year, that'll maintain their 80 hours per week, they're on board, this is great news. Richmond County, we're asking $100,000 per year, we'll increase your service to 60 hours per week, and this will allow all residents in Richmond County to have access to reliable transportation. Port Oxberry, we ask $20,000 per year, and we'll continue to provide service to their residents. So here is what we see the future looking like. It's a little more even than it's seemed to have been in the past. We believe with our fares, we can easily make $150,000 a year, that's 31% of our total costs, that's incredible. We're never going to be self-sufficient, it's, it's not possible, the expenses are too high, so we do need contributions from the municipalities. Inverness will provide 29% of that, Richmond 21, and the province 70, and then Port Oxberry, again, 4%. Payroll will be our biggest expense, fuel is fairly consistent between 50 and 60,000 a year, we've seen the price go anywhere between 98 cents a liter to a dollar fifty a liter, so we're fairly good to manage that cost. And like I say, with the grad for Malcolm, we think maintenance costs can even drop a little lower, we're saying $40,000 a year, which is pretty incredible for, you know, the aging fleet that we've basically survived with over the last two years. So this is what will look like overall. As you can see, the first two years of the pilot project, we're suffering a slight deficit. It's like I say, providing extra service when there wasn't money to do so. So going forward, 2017, we believe we can see a surplus of $55,000. So that, along with contributions from the province, will allow us to make capital purchases that are necessary for transit to keep going. This is, again, a larger part of Richmond County, this is an area that's not being serviced, and we could expand to cover all of this with our 60 hours. So $100,000, it's a lot of money, it's a huge ask for any municipality, and what does the money actually do? You're giving people the opportunity to have independence, you're letting them stay in their homes here in Richmond County, and travel when they need to, for medical appointments, for groceries, for visiting loved ones, you're allowing people to receive an education. Residents in Richmond County travel to the Nautical School, Sarek, Tamarack, Richmond Academy, you're allowing people to obtain employment. Residents in Richmond County can expand their, you know, area of work, they could look for jobs in Port Oxberry, they could look for jobs in Inverness, and we could get them there, and on time. So you allow people to get to medical appointments. This is huge, it seems so easy, but some people have no way to get to their appointments, and if we don't take them, they don't go, there's no other option. So a lot of us take these things for granted, I have been blessed to be surrounded with a huge family who's always supported me, but working at transit, you realize that not everybody has been quite so lucky, but nobody complains about their situation. They work hard, they find jobs, they find ways to get educated, and they're some wonderful, wonderful people. So I think now is the time, we can show the constituents that we support them in every aspect of their lives, and provide them reliable transportation to every single resident. So I know I've given a lot of information, I'll answer any questions anybody has, but one thing I want you to think about when you're making your decision on funding transit is during these two years of our pilot project, it mattered 13,628 times to residents of just Richmond County. So can you put a value on that? So that's my presentation, I can answer any questions that we need.
Jesse and Malcolm, I guess this evening, we won't be making a decision on funding, and Jim, we're going into budget deliberations tomorrow evening, and we'll make decisions then. So in case you're wanting the decision tonight, we won't be doing that tonight.
Darn, thought it would be in good theater.
So I'll open the floor to any questions or comments anyone has. Deputy Warden, McLean.
Thank you for the presentation. Just recently getting back from the FCM, as Jim had said, I'm just wondering, like, if, if there's a big announcement from the federal government to be pushing towards public transit in the revenue side of things, so that pie chart that you had up, is there room there, or is there a commitment from the federal government to be investing in public transit?
Not at the moment. This past year was the first year where they actually came out with, you know, the big announcement, federal government's going to be funding transits, all transits. Unfortunately, it went to the bigger areas, so the smaller transits didn't receive any of that funding. Sydney did, Halifax did, but the Royal Transit, who could actually use the funding, didn't receive it. So I've spoken with several, several people in Halifax who deal with the provincial side of our funding, and they said they're gonna continue to push with the federal government and keep pushing to try to get the money to trickle down to the people who really do. And obviously, if they can show a consistent contribution, that would reduce municipalities' contribution every year.
Okay, thanks. And I just wanted to say that I've been to a couple of meetings where you both, or three of you have presented, and, and we know that you're very, very invested and dedicated to the things that you do, so just, just a thanks for everything that you've been doing for public transit.
Thank you.
Councilor Martel.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation, and it really...
Councilor Martel, can you get closer to the mic?
It's really interesting to see what you've done with the transit, I mean, it looks like you came a long ways, and things are really looking up. And I'd really wanna thank you for what you've done to date, and when you talk about that you expressed the need that people have, and people that are less fortunate than some of us, to have that, that service, I know that it's certainly a need. I get the phone calls, I get letters from people that are saying that they want to continue with, to make sure that we, we support it, and I will certainly be supporting it during budgets to make sure that Richmond County gets their fair share of transit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, council. Councilor Boucher.
Thank you, Warden, Marsha. Thank you very much for the presentation, it's very enlightening. I would like to know why you haven't considered raising the fees.
We have considered it. We feel the $5 is a good spot to stay at, for individuals who, you know, need to get somewhere immediately, a lot of times, they don't have more than $5. The monthly passes is where we've debated increasing that funding. A lot, a lot of times, the passes are paid for through community services or through other programs, and so the ability for them to come up with a little bit more money is more feasible and more reasonable. So it's definitely something we've looked into, but the $5, we feel like, we feel like that's a good amount for most who are using it.
Okay, thank you very much. But the second question I have is, how much service are you gonna give to Richmond, to all of Richmond County?
So it'll be 60 hours of service.
60 hours.
Which is, when we were, yeah, when, when Richmond was basically moving the most people, between 700 and 800 people a month, it was 60 hours that, and it was busy, and we were, you know, keeping up, but, and now, like I say, we're running it more efficiently than we ever have, you know what I mean? We're moving more people, we're making more money, but our costs are staying the same or decreasing, because we're keeping the maintenance in-house, and we are, we've taken a lot on, so, so we think 60 hours is what will service everybody.
Oh, thank you very much.
Councilor Goyesh.
Yes, Warden, my question, I guess, is related to Councilor Boucher, the fee, $5, but what is your clientele, actually? Because you mentioned something like 7,000 people utilize the transit in Richmond. And also, we look at, it's utilized for students going to, but there's not 7,000, who's the remaining of your clientele? What do they utilize the transit for?
Yeah, so we have students, we have people going to work, people going up for medical appointments, people going to, what else? Different, different things, medical, medical employment and education are the three big ones. Some want to go to get groceries, some want to go visit loved ones.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is that $5 today, you can't buy a bag, a bag of chips or a bottle of pop. And, you know, for some people, for students, I can see probably $5, you could have a max per week and say, okay, this is what we charge students, this is what we charge seniors, they gotta go to medical appointments, but when, if you're looking to providing a service, if it's for groceries, while we have grocery stores in Richmond County, that you are actually providing a service for $5 to go to Port Oxberry, while most people cannot travel around the island for $5. And you're competing against the groceries that we do have, you know, the stores we do have here. I agree, $5 is for students, I, I can see leaving that base there, but I can't see whereby you're gonna utilize a transit to go to Port Oxberry, do some shopping, or go, you know, anywhere, or even go to work. If you're going to work, $5 to go to work, I pay that to go locally, to work at Clearwater. So I'm just wondering, is there any way that the survey, a study can be done? Because if you look at your $118,000, if the fees were, instead of five, it would be 10, you would be talking at $236,000. And, you know, but still, I'm saying, it is a good benefit, students do need it, definitely, those that can't afford it, but some people that utilize the transit, I'm sure that you could have different fares, different fees.
And that's what makes it a bit more complicated, though. So where do you draw the line? Because what if you have a low-income senior? Do they still pay more than the student pays, even though the student perhaps has loans and has enough money to pay? It's tricky as to where you actually can draw the line.
The low-income seniors aren't going to NSCC, they're not going for educational purposes.
No, but they like to go to St. Anne's Center to visit loved ones, they like to go to Straight Richmond Hospital to visit, or for blood work, or for, you know...
Okay, so you have two groups, you have seniors and you have students.
Right.
But you have a larger clientele than that, because they don't comprise the 7,000 people that utilize the service in Richmond County.
Exactly, but that's what makes it difficult. So when they call in to book a ride, do we say, how old are you?
For clarification, Councilor Goyesh, that 7,000 is not 7,000, 7,000 different people, 7,000 fares. So one person could go every day, that would be 365. Yeah, it's not 7,000 different people, correct?
But still, I'm wondering where $5 comes in. I find $5 today in this day and age, for a service that's really...
So as, as a board member, as a board member, we set that rate for two years to get people to access transit. If you wanna sit on the board, once again, the board has representatives from Port Oxberry, Inverness, and Richmond County to actually do a review, we're definitely open to that. As Jesse said, looking at the monthly pass is one step in that direction.
That's true.
Possibly doing the next step. We've just been running on equipment, as I said, that's been basically held together to provide a service that was reliable and high-quality. Now we're at a place where we can review that, while we're replacing the equipment that's running 300,000 kilometers. And, you know, the other thing is, we've done a million kilometers on these roads without an accident, without anything, an incident. It just talks about the quality of this, it's not an easy thing to do. So we can do this review, absolutely. The funding allows us to move forward with a reliability that's gonna move it up a step, and a service that's gonna go out further, out to Lordways, out to Port L'Tech, cover St. George's Channel in ways that we're used to, and we can now do it more efficiently, like Jesse said. And in that way, the board can be a year from now going like, great, let's review this. We've set that limit right now at 140,000 for Inverness, and 100,000 for Richmond County, and 20,000 for Port Oxberry, based on where we're at right now. We're gonna be reviewing this every year, but that's where we're at right now. So I totally, we're in that pocket, not making any decision right now on that, but that's where we're going forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a couple, a couple of questions, I guess. Can you explain the CTAP and the PTAP funding, just for the public, so they know exactly this? You have it down as 15% provincial money.
Yeah, so...
That, the CTAP money, is that what's set every April, May, based on the confirmed funding?
It's, so it's based on the contributions from the municipality, not, not your contributions, it's based on the number of people that will serve in the geographical area. So our CTAP funding comes to the province, it's usually around $70,000 a year. So because we're servicing a smaller part of Richmond than we ever have, right in the past, your contribu, your portion of the 70,000 works out to be about $5,000 or $6,000, right? And so Inverness County, the other 64,000 goes towards them, because we're covering all of Inverness County. Richmond, we're covering a piece. This is, like I say, there's a calculation, the province sent me geographical area covered and the number of population served, that's what it's based on. PTAP funding is provided by the province every year in the amount of $50,000. That, again, goes, has to go towards capital purchases. So that's available every year to us, so that, along with the, what we figure we can have is $55,000 for a surplus every year, will allow us to get new vehicles into rotation, which is what we desperately need at this point to move forward.
Okay, so have you received all the PTAP funding?
We did. So we were able to purchase a 24-passenger bus.
Okay, the CTAP funding, you say you received around 70,000 for this current year?
This year, it was 69,887, I think.
Okay.
And next year, it's 68,167, I believe.
So if, if Richmond increases its contribution, can we expect that CTAP funding to be higher next year?
Next year, absolutely. Next year, absolutely. This year, no, they won't change it, but next year they'll know going in if we're providing service to a larger area. It could be about 50/50, right? Richmond would likely receive around $30,000 to $35,000 of it.
So fares currently, you're anticipating around what number?
Uh, so 150,000 this year. We ended last year with 120 for the fiscal year, so we're saying 150 this year. Again, it's going to kind of depend on if we vamp up service again in Richmond County, but that's where we feel it can be and probably exceed that if we get back to the 60 hours.
So we're, we're over a half a million dollars operational cost for this transit?
Oh, yes.
Of which Richmond would only have to put in 100,000. Okay. And I guess for the public out there, currently Richmond gives $3,700 a month, which is 45,000 a year. And this increase that we're being asked is another $4,580 a month of an increase to provide the service from 20 hours up to the 60 hours, the service we had before. Is there any other comments? Okay, and we will, we will let you know exactly where we are, but I just want to say I'm, I'm a supporter of this as well. Sorry. Oh, you hit it again, Councilor. Councilor Goyesh?
Yeah, who's the member from Richmond on the board?
I am.
Warden Marshon.
Oh, you are? So we can expect a report, what do you mean, once a month you meet or...?
Yes, we meet once a month.
How come there's been no report coming to council?
That's a good question.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I expect a good answer.
Well, the only answer I can say is I, I have been bringing them, I guess. But what I'll do, continuing on and ongoing, the reports that you give us at our meetings, I'll just email it. I just assumed everybody was getting the email, but that's my fault. I shouldn't assume.
Well, they should be taking the council for information anyway.
Yeah, I should be emailing you guys so you guys can have it.
Not email, I'll take it to council.
I'll take it to council. And read it there. Our meetings are long enough.
I know. We started at 9:30 this morning, I just finished at 5:30 an hour.
Oh, my God.
It's morning full-time sometimes.
And any other comments? Well, thank you for the presentation.
Appreciate the time.
And we will let you know.
Appreciate the time and the questions. Thank you very much.
Cancel, cancel your mic, Jim. Moving on to item three is the review of the minutes. Everybody had a copy of the minutes in their package. Any comments or questions? Councilor, you can hit your mic, Councilor Goyesh.
Hold, move the minutes as presented.
It's been moved by Councilor Goyesh. Is there a seconder? It's been seconded by Deputy Warden McLean on discussion. Councilor Martel.
It was moved by Gilbert.
What did I say?
Councilor Goyesh.
Sorry, sorry. It was moved by Councilor Boucher. Sorry, Gilbert. It's seconded by Deputy Warden McLean on discussion. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Moving on to item four, which is items added. There was an email sent out today that two grants were added. Lousdale Lines Father's Day Grant and the Grand River Volunteer Fire Department Grant. Any other items to add by unanimous consent? Councilor Martel.
Yes, I would like to add by unanimous consent, we have a lady tonight that's going to present a list of names for the, to justify the, the reason for not accepting the bylaw change for the senior housing, and I'd like to add that as an item added.
Okay, unanimous consent for that? Okay, so that's going to be just to put in the record, a list of names?
Yeah, the list of names to put in the record.
Okay. Okay, we'll add that. Any other items to add? We'll need a motion to accept the agenda with the items added. It's been moved by Councilor Martel. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Councilor Boucher on discussion. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. On to item five on your agenda, action required. You guys want to add the two other grants in with this at this point? Okay, so the four grants are the Lot Loman Fire Volunteer Fire Department Municipal Activity Fund District Number Five for $250. The Lot Loman Volunteer Fire Department Municipal District Activity Fund District Five for another $250. The Lousdale Lines Club for the Father's Day Draw out of the District Three Activity Grant for $500. And the Grand River Volunteer Fire Department out of the District Five Activity Grant for $250. They've all been checked by staff and I believe they're all okay. Need a motion to accept them all. It's been moved by Councilor Boucher. Seconded by Deputy Warden McLean on discussion. Questions been called. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. In your packages, there was for information, some information from the Eastern Counties Regional Library for annual report and the list of checks for May 2017. That's just for information, we don't need a motion on those. If you have any questions on those, you can email myself or the CIO. Moving on to item six, which is items added. Councilor Martel. Just to hit your mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you state your name for the record?
My name is Judy Bonin.
Okay.
And I am here tonight to bring the list of names that have signed, 61 in total, and we want it entered into the records as opposing the changing of the bylaw.
Okay, this is the rezoning application.
Yeah, and either the signatures that I brought you.
Judy, the, the previous one that you brought to us a couple of weeks ago, how many names are on that one?
There was 45, but I, I hadn't went to see everybody, right? I just assumed that that was okay.
Oh, it's okay. So the list you have this evening is 61 names?
61, yeah.
Okay.
And there's some people I didn't go see yet, but, you know, 61.
So we'll accept that and we'll verify those.
Okay, so do I just give this to somebody?
You can give it to Yvonne, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, Judy. Councilor Martel?
Yeah, that was just a kind of brief explanation. That was on the heels of that Sir Tai Lung had said at the last meeting that if, that the residents would come up with 50% of the names, because he was saying that the first list of names was not valid at that time. So that they did go out and kind of get the same people again and other people besides. So that's just to verify that there's still that, that perception out there that people didn't want the bylaw change.
Okay, and is, is that list, what are the boundaries for that list? As I should have asked you that, Judy. Maybe you should come to the mic so public, just hit the mic again. My, my apologies for not asking that.
Yeah, that started...
The question is the boundaries. We just want to know what the boundaries are.
That started from, you know, like the housing from the church...
Yeah.
To the picnic tables.
The Bevins Hill. Okay.
The Bevins Hill.
Thank you, Judy. Any other questions? Okay, that's given to our clerk. We'll move on to item seven on the list, which is the 15-minute question period. Anybody wants to come up with questions?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It's a pleasure to be here and Mr. Counselor in all, in general, the entire council. Long time since I've been in. It's always interesting and exciting and I've enjoyed it so far this evening. I wanted to ask a simple question. There may be no simple answer to it, but we have so many things in Richmond County that I know over the years, we have used the levies to provide. Why do you not look at transit in the same light? Fire departments are an essential service. I think transit's getting to the point where it's an essential service. Why would you not consider, you know, one cent levy or some such thing on all of us, even though we don't have transit in many cases? But it would certainly be a way to keep from doing this dog and pony show on an ongoing basis. So I would beg you to consider that. And, and as always, it's a pleasure to see all of you.
We will. We will consider that.
It's certainly, I think, and I, I've been talking to a lot of the public, as I always do. I have never heard one person say that they don't want to pay for transit. That is people that understand the makeup of our county and understand that we have a lot of people who are not wealthy and we have a small number certainly that are, and God bless them. They should be happy to pay just to make sure. The old phrase, I believe it was Jesus Christ that said it, be your brother's keeper. And I would strongly urge that you look at the business of a levy. One cent, I think, great start, and it would keep you from having the, the misery of having to pinch pennies and fight over it and all the rest of it. So it's worth considering. I'm not saying it has to fly, but it certainly is worth considering. And I believe the people of Richmond County are generous enough, understanding enough, and compassionate enough. And Brett, Brian, you and I witnessed a great deal of that compassion yesterday at another event we attended. So thank you very much for the privilege, sir and counselors.
Thank you, Shirley. Any other questions or comments from the gallery? Going once, going twice. Okay, we have an in-camera session this evening, so we may be in for some time. Anybody's welcome to come back. Once we come out of in-camera. We'll go in camera in five minutes.